Order and roll call.
Chair Goss.
President.
Vice Chair Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Swapp, and Commissioner Noble are excused. We have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, the first order of business is the approval of minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to accept, I'm sorry. I make a motion to accept the minutes of March thirteenth.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have the consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. Then we will move to new business. That is the general planned two thousand and forty review for council recommendation. The city of Kingman Development Services Division is working with consultant Jessica Sarkisian of the Upfront Planning and Entitlements LLC on the general plan two thousand and forty update. The general plan two thousand and forty has completed the required sixty day review timeframe. One of the requirements of the process is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the document and provide recommendations to the city council for its approval. Please find the link below to view the document. It's long. A hard copy is available for viewing in the city clerk's office located at three ten North Fourth Street, Kingman, Arizona, eight six four zero one. Do we have a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Goss. Absolutely. Before, before we get started, I just want to remind everybody this meeting is recorded and it's very important that we are talking into our microphones. Our recording secretaries are going to yell us, yell at us if we're not. So with that, I would also like to introduce Jessica Sarkisian with upfront, all of that, yeah. Upfront Planning and Entitlement LLC. She is the consultant of whom we have contracted with to assist us with this update on the general plan.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, chair members of the commission. My name is Jessica Sarkisian with Upfront Planning. I'm going to be going over today's presentation about the general plan update and we are seeking a recommendation of approval from the commission in order to move forward to the council. So the general plan, for anybody who hasn't been participating in the last few months, is required by state statute and each municipality is required to provide an update every ten years. Because you are a population just under fifty thousand, thirty-four thousand, there are certain elements that are required by state statute. You guys have your existing general plan. However, there were certain things that were missing and we were adding on to it and actually adding additional items as well to help you guys in the future. So a land use plan is required, a circulation element, growth area element, open space element, environmental planning, cost of development, and public services and water resources. So the existing general plan was adopted in two thousand and fourteen and it was Kingman two thousand and thirty. It had seven elements. It was missing the water element. And also, it's not required, but one of the things that, and there was economic development as well. There were only two maps in that, in that draft, land use and growth areas. It needed updating, new policies regarding energy, building types, changing in land development patterns and circulation opportunities. It did not talk too much about additional interchanges. It also did not talk about affordable housing and things like that, which are very much more evident right now. So in the timeline here, we've gone through pretty much most of the process of the research, the surveys, and now we are going through the public hearing process. We had our sixty day review and then we had the work session during that with which any of you are part of. And so the goal is to get to recommendation of approval and hopefully recommendation of approval with the city council, which would then put it on the ballot in the November fifth election for voters. So the public participation plan was approved and survey was, has been active on the website. We're up to two hundred and eleven responses plus as of March. And then GPAC, we had the general plan advisory committee meetings, which were public meetings and they were in person here. They were on December thirteenth, January tenth, January twenty-fourth, and February sixth. We've also had public hearings such as this one, where we had the joint meeting with council as well for people to ask questions. And during also the sixty day review period, there's also availability for people to send in questions and comments through the website and contact staff if they had any questions or, or suggestions. So again, we've talked about this before. We had the visioning results and everybody was talking about what they want to be because that was our vision statement. What do you want vision, Kingman to be in the future? And so clean, safe, friendly, and affordable were big ones that came back. These are the kind of like the word cloud, the top ones that we were seeing. Should Kingman with incorporated boundaries remain the same or grow? Majority said Kingman needs to grow. Should Kingman grow or annex beyond its current boundaries? Majority again said yes. Should Kingman encourage new types of housing? Sixty-seven percent saying yes. So the standard type that we're seeing traditionally across all areas is single family residential, but that's obviously not satisfying everybody's needs and income levels right now in demographics. So different types of housing sites. So the new general plan is proposing nine elements with the previous ones with adding water and economic development. We added more maps in this, this plan. So we have a larger, we're showing the study area, which we've expanded from the last one. We added, we updated the land use and growth areas, and we also added parks and trails and circulation map. So we updated the vision based on the public outreach and general plan comments from the committees. We, which to be, Kingman is a city with strong growth, a thriving history, inclusive communities, and strong housing employment opportunities. I know we changed inclusive to welcoming in the text. That was a comment from the last meeting. Kingman provides opportunity for commercial, industrial, residential, and tourism within a dynamic economy and a strong labor force, an unmatched living and working environment. Kingman provides tourism and recreation opportunities to residents and visitors that are safe, clean, and engaging, and Kingman is the place to be. So that is the reaching goal of what they want people to recognize as they come into Kingman or live in Kingman for the next twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. I know residents sometimes will complain and say that's, that's not how I feel right now, and that is the point of the vision statement. It is the goal of what you want it to be. Obviously, every, every community has its own constraints. They need, you know, more economy, more housing, more workforce. So this is what we're, one of our goals is, which is the vision, which all the policies and elements within the plan are behind and push this forward. In addition to the expanding the study area, we updated the implementation chapter to give more criteria for that with major and minor amendments, and also administrative amendments. So things that are typos or different things like that would be able to be done administratively if they don't, if they're not impacting the plan. It's just a text change. And then the difference, we also added the different changes in amendments based on if it's in the downtown or not, because if it's a downtown area, for instance, you're found the fringe of the city, ten acres might not be such a big deal for residential to commercial or something like that, and it can just be a zone change. But it would be very impactful in the downtown area. So those two went changed from that category, which you can see here. So if it's in the downtown area, if you have major amendments, you have different things of one residential land use classification to another of ten acres or more in the downtown growth area, whereas one residential land use to another residential classification of sixty acres or more is a major amendment if you're not in the downtown. Otherwise, it would fall under a minor amendment. So those, the difference between major and minor is major usually typically occur once a year. They have the sixty day review very much like this. A minor amendment can occur anytime throughout the year as well as with your planning cases. So they go concurrently. It still is the same process. It's just an abbreviated time schedule. And it, and also you're not waiting for that date. Sometimes development gets postponed because they're waiting for the major amendment cycle to come up. And so anything that's really sometimes a really large project, they try to make sure they hit it and they don't just, you know, have to wait an entire year before that hearing. And so we also talked about arterial or principal roadway, because now we have the circulation plan in there. So if there's any major changes to that plan, realignments of roads, that would be a major amendment because that's a big thing if you're realigning a road. However, it's a collector road, then that would be a minor amendment. So it still has to go through the process, but it's not a once a year kind of thing. And then revisions to the boundaries of the growth area map, which you'll see later. And the same thing with minor amendments. It's just, it decreases the requirements here. So you, these are the triggers which you're seeing. And anything not within these parameters would be an administrative amendment, which would be handled by the director. So here you can see the study area boundary expanded. So the city of Kingman here is shown with a red boundary, and then the study area is the dark gray. So you've expanded quite a bit to the north and also to the east. And the purpose of this is for any interchanges being added, any additions going on to the north. So whether or not you annex that area in the near future or ever at all, anything that goes in there through the county as applications, they would need to notify the city of anything going in there because it directly impacts your study area and your, your future plans. So that would, you know, anything with water or infrastructure. So it's just very beneficial to expand that. We did survey results, which you guys have participated in. So land survey, survey results. Housing shortage, of course, majority, it's half and half, but everybody feels the housing shortage issue right now. And the majority of the housing shortage is felt because of aging housing stock. No new builds is what we're probably seeing happening. And then do you feel, again, talking about the vision survey earlier, needing more townhomes and low density apartments, sixty percent agree that that's felt to be needed in the community. And then more single family homes, they're kind of half and half. They're like, yeah, we need them, but what we really need is a higher density and more intense uses. And do you feel there's enough retail options? I ninety percent disagree. Everybody wants more retail. Everybody wants more office and medical, as you can see here. Not as much, you know, some people feel they agree, but it's at fifty-five percent feel they need more office and medical. Enough employment opportunities, obviously, because of the not, you know, enough places to work, then you got eighty-six percent feel there's not enough places to work for residents, not enough options for them to work. And then the city should encourage high density development on vacant or underutilized parcels that already have infrastructure. So things that are already connected to lines in the middle of a city or areas versus on the fringe where you have to expand stuff, ninety percent feel that yes, higher density development should be encouraged in those spots. And then should these areas be delimited to growth areas? Seventy-three percent feel yeah. Let's focus our attention on the growth areas, which is actually the point of the growth area chapter, to focus your attention on where we encourage it, where incentives are, financial advantages, things like that. People asking if they're in favor of denser development in downtown to preserve open space outside, sixty percent agree. Sometimes you get comments, comments of people just wondering what depends on the situation where it's at. And then older commercial and residential uses and properties should be revitalized. Fifty percent about strongly agree again, and then you have thirty-six percent agree. So I guess I think the other percentages are just, they're like, depends on the spot again. So the, here's the updated land use map. It's easier to read and it will be digital on your website, but it's easier to read on the fold out map. But here it is, it is a PDF. So we updated to twelve land use categories. You have the rural, rural density, low density, medium density, intermediate, and high density. So that's all your residential. You have local commercial, which was previously four categories. So we reduced that to, because you want your land use to be a high level. You don't want it to be a zoning map. So you want there to be land uses within there. And then regional commercial, regional hospitality, recreational hospitality is new. It's an option. We don't really have anything listed on the map, but it gives you an option for the future, should somebody come in and want to put that in there. Light industrial and industrial, which is primarily around the airport. And then public, so we removed quasi-public. It's either public or it's not, right? You don't want people to think that it's kind of a park, but you know, it's private or something like that. We want, it's public. That's it. And then parks and open spaces, you can see, and removed neighborhood planning areas. It was just really confusing on how to organize that tier system. So, and in here, we also categorized and defined what those categories mean, what those densities were, and what example land use categories would be. So in rural, you have one unit to the acre, low, one to two, medium, three to eight, intermediate, nine to sixteen, and high density seventeen to eight, twenty-eight. And those did not change from the previous code. But we just simply defined more of what it meant and what we're looking for, as well as the comparable zoning categories that would typically fit in those, those land use categories. So if you're already in those land use categories and you have that zone, or if you want to change to that zone, you don't have to do a general plan. You just do a rezone. Local commercial again and all these things. So here you can see the total general plan study area is about sixty-eight thousand, a little over sixty-eight thousand acres, with sixty-three percent residential, five percent commercial, eleven percent industrial, four percent public, fifteen percent parks and open space, and then you have some right away and recreational hospitality. So you can see the primary, I mean, residential, you need residential to do about everything. So that's going to be the highest. And then you have the commercial at five. It's focused along the freeways, the arterials. And then also, within industrial, you are allowed commercial. So you're allowed some level of commercial in it. So it's not stating that you're only going to have five percent. It's within that industrial category. You can, you're allowed some portions of commercial. You can have high intensity commercial and things like that, and vice versa, so that there's some flexibility. In the growth areas, this changed to specific areas. We'll talk about the map in a minute. But most people felt that the immediate area is growing and then that they consider their area currently rural. This was a good one. We were seeing projects said, would you like to keep new development from coming into your area? And majority of people said no. And then would you prefer your area to be included in a growth area? And the same amount said, I agree. So that means people are pro-development. They're pro, they understand the situation of how you get growth in the city and they're in favor of it. Oh, sorry, I know why it's still in there. We already got rid of centennial. So this is the growth area. And it shows the different blocks and boxes in here. And so you obviously have the airport, the huge airport area. The downtown Kingman area remained the same. You have Ranch to Santa Fe and West Beale Street, Grace Neil Parkway Corridor, Santa Rosa, Bank Street, and North Stockton Hill. And then every area within that, every growth area within the general plan specifically tells you what you want, what they're wanting to do. So for instance, in downtown Kingman, it focuses on revitalization, talks about higher density development. It talks about reusing, reuse and infill, finding ways to do more commercial or offices in those areas. We have also, just as another example, you have Bank Street, growth area locating a state trust section. It's very important that you define what you want your state trust sections to be. They're very supportive of higher development and intensities in those areas. Close proximity to residential, commercial, and near the Kingman Industrial Park. It's prime for development and investment with existing infrastructure and employment opportunities. Higher density residential should be encouraged with commercial. So each, each separate area has its own definition of what it is and how to encourage it. Some areas, you know, don't encourage, I mean, you don't want, like, for instance, the airport area does not even talk about any single family residential. That is a high employment area. So that is going to be a focus on that. So that says like the growth area is the largest in the Kingman general plan study area, prime for growth for economic development, encourages office, manufacturing, commercial, and industrial uses. They have people located here for transportation connections, and the city encourages industrial office development in this area and entitlements which support such uses. So it's very specific. It's not just saying we want any growth. It's targeted and organized. In circulation, majority felt there's not enough transportation methods, but it's getting close to fifty-fifty. Do you feel the roadways currently in the city, they, actually seventy-seven percent, they're too busy. So it's primarily focused, I would assume, on certain roadways. And so things like that would follow up with a new transportation study or investment, which the general plan has goals and policies in there and implementation strategies, as one would be, conduct a transportation study, figure out where we can improve, what have a hierarchy. It talks about where the funding, you know, where capital improvement funds are aimed at, with their five year, ten year, thirty year plan. So that's the kind of things that the general plan pushes at to address some of these options. They can't fix, the general plan doesn't fix everything. It tells you, these are the things we want to do, and here's a plan. Pick one for this year, pick one for the next year. Here's your, you know, based on your budgets that you might have. More pedestrian connections in the city, seventy-one percent agreed. Do you feel there is ability to add new development to the current roadways, fifty-fifty, yes or no? Kingman should continue to approve transit, such as bus and public transportation systems, eighty-three percent agreed. And do you feel safe walking and biking to a store from your home along the roadways? Currently, they do not. So that's also why they want more pedestrian connections. And we talk about lighting and safety corridors, connections between residential, and we also talk about bus access. Currently, the highest priority for transportation funding is maintenance of existing, followed by expansion of roadway. So if you work outside the home, this is always interesting, approximately, how many miles do you commute? A majority were either retired or between one and five miles. You have less than a mile, work from home. So about, what is that, eighty-five percent are within five miles of home. So they're all local. They're all very close. So it's very, so at least you have everybody working here and they're trying to figure out, how can we get to my resident, my business from my home? So we add the new circulation map, accounting for new proposed interchanges, which weren't previously on the plan. We updated goals and policies reflecting public responses and GPAC committee comments regarding transportation. And we define a street classification system and the existing system in Kingman, not just, because previously there was no real chapter. It was a chapter and it said, please see this other plan. So this one actually identifies and says, this is what we want. This is the basis. This is what needs to be done here. Included streets, railroad, airport, cart, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation. So it's in there. It's definitely showing as an investment in Kingman in that this is what we have. If people come and we want to do grants or bonds or any kind of financial, this, we have a plan in place of what's existing and what we plan for those interchanges, as well as future growth, and it's called out in there. So public facilities and services, fire department and police department, library, development services, wastewater, sewer, water. Most people were unsure. They just, I guess, aren't engaged to find out if they feel like, which is good, I guess, because they don't have to use the services. So police and fire are, most people felt that there was adequate response time, or they either were unsure because they haven't used them, which is great. But yeah, as the city grows, that will be something that looks, they look into, like when they talk about new sites and locations. So we updated the police and fire standard details per the city, per the departments, updated existing water and wastewater department information and capacity regarding the system, the sewer systems, and the solid waste services. We detailed the library services and the operation, how they operate, who they, what kind of opportunities. They talk about resume building, school classes, just things that they offer, and they offer internet services. And then updated the goals and objectives to be able to provide quality services to keep up with the growth. So triggers for them to constantly monitor the status of response times as well as locations. For instance, versus north and south of the freeway as they expand, are they going to have enough, they have the response times quick enough? Are there things like that? Parks, trails, and open space. Most people feel parks, open space should be a priority, and most also recreate in the community. Do you feel the existing recreational opportunities are adequate? Most people felt they didn't, were not, but they do feel that there are enough, they didn't also did not feel enough recreation opportunities. Kingman has adequate open spaces, thirty-five percent agreed. When then you have strongly agree. So they felt it was like, they're like, it's okay, you know? And then the Kingman parks are clean and inviting. Majority agreed with that. What, what is missing from Kingman? Parks was the big note, was the big note, everybody said. A roller skating rink, a little harder to do a roller skating rink, not kind of like the big thing cities are investing in. But it's something. So if they wanted to do a hockey thing, you know, considered a roller rink, I don't know. But these are the different things. We did do that research on that and see what their comments were. So we updated to reflect the latest two thousand and twenty Parks and Trails master plan. The previous plan was going before it. So we did reference a lot of the, the level of service, the information from those Parks and Trails plan in two thousand and twenty, provide park site standards, support, reiterated the two thousand and twenty Parks Plan. So they support each other. It strengthens the value of it. Highlighted safety and security and maintenance of those parks. There was concern over lighting, hours of operation, vandalism, maintenance of the, of the playyards. And then talked about providing funding and acquisition opportunities. So it's not just always the city has to purchase. The city has to this. There's donation opportunities. There's fundings, partnerships with developers. Put in different items in there, because I know sometimes developers can develop and build a site, but there's triggers with the state as far as how many acres that, that spot can be. And so we adjusted those per state statute to what they're allowed to get reimbursed by. With cost of development, Kingman prefers the infrastructure to live the way you want. Most people disagreed. Do you think there's enough staff to support the city growing needs? Most disagreed. Should the city seek more grants for national funding to help incentivize new developments? Eighty-eight percent said yes. And should the city seek more private partnerships to develop and address problem sites from the city? Again, eighty-three percent said yes. And should the city try to purchase sites to develop them in the future? Seventy-two percent agreed. And do you think new development should cover the cost for new development? Eighty-five percent agreed. And then we talk about purchasing sites. A lot of jurisdictions do this. If there's problem sites, you don't obviously purchase it and build it right away. You kind of hold on to it until you can get a nice piece together or you work with, you know, bonds, and as pieces become available, you know, they acquire them. But it's usually a fair market value and appraisals and all that fun stuff. It's not like the city is out there buying up stuff and with brokers and things like that. They have their own real estate department. But if there are special areas within the city that the council can focus on and say, hey, this is an area we want to invest in. We're very involved in what goes here in the future. That's a great way cities will do is they'll acquire properties and eventually they'll put out an RFP, which is a request for a proposal for a private developer to come in and actually build it. And so that helps, that, but the city has a say in how it looks and what it is. And so it's just another way to help fund things in the way that, and direct the city in the way they want to go. So we updated the opportunities list for funding. We have an extensive list of options for funding in the city. It does not require to be, have them all done. It's just saying, hey, these are options. Please look at them. If this doesn't work, do this. If this doesn't work, do that. I know we talked about sales tax in there as well. So this is not telling anybody that we're raising it. It's just like, these are the, these are the funding mechanisms for different things in the city. We updated the goals and policies to strengthen funding and provide reinvestment and development partnerships for shared, shared costs and provide incentives for development. So that's another thing that's going to tie in with economic development a lot, is what kind of incentives can you do to gear people into those growth areas, into those high impact areas? And then environmental resources and historical resources. We updated the list of the resources, added details about historical items in Kingman, provided mitigation measures appropriate with protecting air and water quality, and added goals and policies to better retain historic resources and character of the city. Majority, everyone wants to preserve historic areas in downtown in Route sixty-six. And so we put stuff in there in place. An implementation goal, for example, would be to update the zoning code or the building standards code or something to provide opportunities. You don't have to do it right now, Sean, but, but opportunities in the future. And a lot, a lot of jurisdictions are trying to figure out how to do this because the new building codes require ADA and fire sprinklers and all these things and structural and firewalls, which, when you come into a historic area, demolish the historic character. And so every jurisdiction right now is kind of, and I know the building code, they're all looking at different ways to say, okay, these building codes are great, but in historical areas of reinvestment, we can't do all these things. What is, what is life or death? What do we have to maintain? And what are ways that we can get this building operating again without ruining its, its character and ruining the downtown area? And so those are some of the things that we talk about in here because it's, it's very difficult. And I know that's the thing I hear from architects all the time and city engineers is I can't get this. You get to a certain point and it kind of dies because you can't run fire sprinklers through these brick walls that are gorgeous. Or the ceiling was done with, you know, great artwork, you know, with art at the time. So just things like that are mentioned in there. With the water survey, are you concerned about water? It's Arizona. Everybody in the entire state says yes on this one. Do you feel your water use has gone up? Some say up. A lot say it remained the same. Do you currently use low flow water utilities in your, in your home? Majority are saying yes, because they're kind of just, what's Majority are saying yes, because they're kind of just, what's available even now. If you go to Home Depot, I think they've taken things off the shelves if they're not low-water use. Kingman is on track to satisfy current and future water demands. Agree or disagree? This is kind of, the water chapter is a little difficult, because we're restricted by the state on what the cities and municipalities are allowed to do. So we pushed the implementation goals and policies as far as we could. So whenever something does change at the state level, you guys have the ability to act on it. But this is kind of one of those things that, there's so much politics and so much drama with what's going on in the law, and constant changes in bills. So we just kind of, we did what we could, and you guys will hopefully, when things release and you can actually track water and wells and all these other things, we can figure out what's going on. So this was also added, that wasn't there previously. So we detailed overview of water supplies and future demand. Provide different conservation, reuse, and demand management techniques, options. They're not required, they're options that the city can implement. I know we talked about like purple pipes and stuff like that, which is not currently, you know, all that stuff, but it's an option for the future, so at least it's, we're aware of it. Outline water education and outreach opportunities, and then provide goals and policies for water quality and quantity in the future. And then economic development, should Kingman work to promote the redevelopment of vacant, underutilized, or failing commercial properties? Everybody said absolutely, basically. Larger commercial areas should have access to transit, including light rail, streetcar, or bus service. Majority agreed there again. More intense commercial areas should allow higher-density housing, including townhomes and apartments. Again, we're talking about the housing from previous surveys, so you're seeing how they're kind of overlapping a little bit. Majority here said agree, but you also had about 38% disagreeing. And then future employment types and job base should support housing types, to allow people to live and work in Kingman, agree. And so that's when you get a new employer, I know we're working on projects in Casa Grande, there's tons of stuff going on in Casa Grande with, you know, the chip factories and the support stuff and the high-power gas lines. And you get tons of industrial, thousands and thousands of acres, but you have no one to work there. And so that's the issue of you having to make sure that you have the housing to support the people to work there. When you, when you have this big new, you know, economic ability at the airport or wherever, a new supplier or something, how can you make sure that they, that the person, that the company coming in is secure in their workforce, they feel that they have abilities to grow, and that makes them want to come here? Should Kingman encourage a variety of light industrial manufacturing or technology for more opportunities? Yes. Should Kingman increase opportunities for economic development? Agree, yes. Kingman is a tourist destination with a range of activities. So this is a disagree mostly. Kingman has tourism experiences and products that appeal to people of diverse backgrounds, and that's 50/50. So if you can get your residents to feel like the downtown area is fun, obviously their tourists will know, because the residents know more about Kingman and where to find things than anywhere else. So that's obviously a downtown economic thing that needs to go. And we talk about, with the economic development department about providing, you know, plans and, you know, marketing campaigns and things like that for those areas. The top two challenges facing Kingman as a destination for tourists is limited nightlife, and then the drive-by. You know, we keep hearing about the drive-by, and then followed by community resistance. So if you have something, restaurants, bars, you know, places to go see entertainment, we're not talking theaters or anything, but if there's a place that they can go and watch somebody perform live, you know, just something to have people gather at, it'll keep them here longer than just, hey, I'm stopping here for this, and let's, and then I continue on. So those are, so those are the things that economic development department would be really focused on and with their marketing campaign. So we added details about workforce and employment by industry, and talked about labor force and education attainment. Listed opportunities for the economic activity areas, which would be downtown, I-40, commercial, industrial and office, rail, airport, industrial park. We talked about regional trade opportunities, being so close to all these different major commercial areas with rail, as well as the airport and I interstate. And policies and incentives to grow housing and quality workforce. That's, housing and workforce is the big thing. And tourism as an economic driver. So getting more people here to use things, to use the things that you do have, will just spur on more growth. And then again, we talked about, I know we had talked about before, is that the labor force and workforce and things like that. So Kingman Airport is not considered, when we're doing the policies, are not the policies, the, the table and the data charts within it. We talk about workforce, and there were some discussions about, it's not large enough, because technically, the airport is not within Kingman. So it skews a little bit on the census data, because census data only is incorporated, so. Where you do have much more, but it's not being accounted for. And it's also not being accounted for, unfortunately, with tax dollars from them, so. Trying to compensate for that. So that's why with the growth areas and the growth of everything, we are hoping that, if we can go back to land use. So though, although the airport is not within the city, we are encouraging a lot of area around it that is for industrial and employment, that is going to be in the city. And so that way, they could grab some of that stuff. And some of the areas within the city currently are shown as industrial and office and things like that. So that is the end of organizing this. I know I've had questions before about, you know, this is, yeah, this was the last one. So the 60-day review is already done, we've already compiled the responses. We didn't actually get too many, we just got some kind of little refinements here and there. And then this is our planning commission date. And then council hearing is going to be in two different locations on May 2nd and the 21st, correct? And so those are required by state statutes, based on your population size, to hold them in two different places. So the first one will be a public hearing, the second one will be the action item. So if there's any questions, I know if there's anyone in the, I don't think there's anybody in the public, but if anybody has any questions about how the general plan works. One thing I do want to clarify is that for anybody, the general plan is not a zoning document. It does not have permitted uses lists. It does not change your status. It doesn't change anything. If you still need to go through zoning, you still need to go through zoning. It doesn't change you from, you know, a commercial zoning to a residential zoning. If it's a residential over a property, you still would have to go through a rezone to commercial. It's just saying the long-use intent of that property is that we feel it would be best for the city for this. But it's, the city's not going to go out and rezone properties, this is the general plan, so. Are there questions or comments, concerns?
City annexed the airport.
Yes, yes.
Well, we own the land.
Right, you own the land.
So we got to sell it, because I was on both commissions, the airport authority and the city. Can never figure that out, why the city owns the lands, but it has to sell it, but then the county takes, supposedly takes care of the roof.
Yeah.
Very confusing.
It was interesting, I was talking to a woman at SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, and it has to do with the former airbase.
Right.
And all that, and it's really, really interesting. I mean, they need to make a museum or something about there and do all kinds of stuff.
Oh, we used to have one, till it caught fire.
But it is, yeah, that one is very interesting on how, you know, certain things are registered on the national database, and certain things are not on the historic database, and, you know. But it's really, it's really cool when you get into the history of all that stuff, how long it's been here and what occurred there, so. Do you have some questions?
Chair Goss, Mr. Kessian. Just so I understand, this is my first time going through a general plan type of process. We had the workshop earlier. I missed the beginning of it, so the parameters of that was just to provide input on the document that was put before us, right? Is that what that was?
Correct, that workshop, yeah.
All right, and so at this point, our role is just to approve this document wholesale, based on what you've said. We're not amending anything to it that should have come in through some sort of input from the public or something, right?
It's already been amended based on the 60-day review comments. So you should have like a red line, and the draft that you got is the clean version also. That is what, based on the comments that we received from either staff or the public, that's, those are what, those are those changes. So it's minor, there's some minor revisions since you last saw it.
I just, I just want to make it clear, at this point, you're not approving. You're, you'll just be recommending an approval to council. So I just want to, want to make sure that's, that's, that's clear, because that's, there's a lot of confusion sometimes that comes up with that. Like for instance, with our, our CUPs, right? You guys are actually approving those, right? To where this, you're not approving, you're just giving a recommendation for council to approve, if, if you so choose to do so.
Correct. Yeah, and so like I mentioned in before, we acknowledge, I mean, I acknowledge on all of them, they're never perfect documents. The general plans, even zoning ordinance are living, breathing documents. They're meant to be amended, they're meant to change, which is why there's an entire chapter dealing with how to change it, and what qualifies as certain changes. So for instance, every year, you're going to have an overall amendment. Not an entire one, not the huge 10-year, I need a consultant one. But it would be more staff-driven for any changes that they see that come in, or say there's a state statute that changes, or, you know, accessory dwelling unit change. But we did put stuff in here to cover that. But if there's any big changes that, or if they say they want a new chapter, that would be stuff that would come through that every year or once a year. Or applicants could do it every, you know, submit, and you'd have a minor amendment every month or whatever. So if, if there's, if there's something that, you know, you, you see over time that you're not happy with, this is not something you have to keep for 10 years. It is something that you amend and work with over the next 10 years. And we hope that this one's easier to work with than the last one. I know the last one, with the neighborhood planning areas and things like that, they weren't even sure how to work with it. So that's why you probably didn't see too many things coming through with that, and more just zonings. So hopefully with this one, you can, they can work with it better and have a better vision of what they need to do.
When we worked on the 2020 and the 2030, you know, Stockton Hill has been a pain, because we had to live with what was handed down to us. But when we did the 2020 and the 2030, we took Wallapai Mountain Road and in the city limits, instead of having, like Stockton Hill was center line, 200 feet each side for commercial wall, that hasn't worked. So when we did the Wallapai Mountain Road overlay district and everything, we went 300 feet from the center line to have commercial on either side. And I, I still don't see...
That's...
Or that might be.
Yeah, so that's actually in the zoning code, it's not in the general plan.
Well, it was, that's what we set it up for, when I was back, when I was back on planning and zoning the first two times.
I, I know that that, that is laid out in, in the zoning code, but not...
Is it still in there?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed to think.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, this doesn't change anything in the zoning code.
Okay.
So if it's an ordinance that's been adopted, it doesn't, it's, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Chair Goss, sorry, I got another question. I noticed there's, what, 200 and some odd responses now? I know when the hospital had some questionnaires that went out, they mailed, so I received one. So was there an effort to, to send it out beyond just the internet? Like to actually send it to people's addresses, the questionnaire?
So with general plan, you typically, even with zoning codes, you don't mail anything into the homes, just because it's such an effort to entire city. If they did, they would do something like in, what they used to do, which I don't even know if you do them anymore, mailing of water bills. They would put a thing into the water bill, but now people don't even...
Correct, that's, that's at an extremely high cost.
Yeah.
I think the last, the last one that we did was, was about five grand, so.
So, so usually it's via website, Instagram, in-person things, meetings like these, like the joint meeting we had on the G-PAC. That's usually how the outreach occurs now, because there's just, in order to, I mean, there's no, it's very different, it's weird, because it's very different from like this parcel zoning, where you would have a sign and mail to direct surrounding owners, because it's, this one is not, there's not, it's affecting everybody. So there's no place like put signs or do mailings, because it's so wide.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, it's a, it's a small number of responses relative to the size of the city. Then again, hardly anybody turns up for these meetings, so it's kind of, it's not a lot of people interested in these things. But like, some of the answers surprised me a little, like people were more than happy to have high-density residential in their neighborhoods. I kind of wonder if there isn't like a self-selection thing going on for people that are more progressive?
Yeah, or they're more involved. So, and it's funny, because I see that in all of the surveys I do. And then I'll see in the very same meeting, people opposing high-density housing. So it's that kind of thing, and I purposely do those surveys also for council, so when they do have people of opposition coming, they can understand that although you do have people who are opposing, so, but if you ask that same question, would you like it next to your house, they'll probably say no. Right, they need it, they know they need it, they want it in their area. But then if you say, do you want new development in your neighborhood? No. So it's, it's like you can't, it has to go somewhere. So that's when I feel it's on you and the council to make the hard decision and say, we, it's, everybody knows we need it, so we're going to make the decision of where it goes best and approve those kind of things, so.
Okay, thank you. Chair Goss, sorry, I got, I got another one. I know right down the street, we have that Beale Hotel, which is basically, it's going to be demolished. They're, they're not doing anything with it. And you mentioned like, including language in this, this document, to, to make it to where we can maybe act on that. I mean, based on being on this board for a while, I know that we use this thing as a cudgel, kind of where we say, it generally seems to conform with the, the general plan or whatever. I'm not sure if we need some specific language to do like gray field redevelopment for something like Beale Hotel, that would allow us to finally move on something like that. Again, maybe I'm, I don't know all the details of it, because it'd probably be some condemnation process or something due to public safety first, before we redevelop it. But that would benefit downtown immensely, because of the history of the building, you know? Which is another item that you brought up in here.
So I'll, I'll speak to that. So those, those measures to do those types of things are in place farther down in the codes, right? In the building codes and in the zoning codes and things like that. So that, that's where the Historical Preservation Commission and things like that come into play. That, that particular, that particular building that you speak of, I, I have to be careful at what I say. However, I will let you know that there, there are things in the works for that building, and demolishing it is not an option. So just, just, just know that, so.
Yeah.
I can't speak for the other members, but I, I have talked to some, and there's interest in saving that building, in, in the community too. So anything that we could do at this point, while we're making the decision to approve this thing, I know the 60 days already passed, but that would really help downtown a lot.
Yeah, so the, so the historic element is, we didn't put it in there because it is such a loaded thing. Because that involves the National Register, as well as the State Historic Preservation, as well as if you guys have your own personal city one.
And we, and we do.
And so it, they all have different requirements, they all have different standards of what you can and can't do. And then putting someone on that designation, not, I mean, not in just regards to that hotel, but in, in general. You have very amazing buildings, very cool stuff in the, in the city. And so putting, you want to put policies in place that encourage saving those things. But it's hard, because you also, when you do that, and you have, like, we're dealing with that in Mesa, like a state of demolition kind of stuff like that, on certain buildings. And you start doing that, then it's a negative impact on people, and they have to opt in. You're not allowed to just put them on there, they have to personally say, I want to be a historic designation. So it becomes a little harder, so that's why we left it out, so that they can, he can deal with that stuff. But we did put in here, in the National Environmental Resources and Historical Resources, we touched on it, as I mentioned before, because there needs to be ways, because the way the current codes are and requirements, they're really preventing reuse of buildings. And so some of the, the implementation measures, we talk about our identify and promote opportunities for adaptive reuse of underutilized historic structures. So that would be probably when you have availability. Obviously, everything is based on staff availability and funding. That would be something similar to a list, right? A master list of which properties qualify, which ones you guys are interested in. And then identify grants and other financial assistance programs to help rehabilitate and make habitable historic and significantly important buildings. And so that's also another issue. You have that with some people who have really cool homes, but they don't have the funding to improve the roof, or the siding, or the windows, or the doors, and so it deteriorates on itself. And we call, there's a couple of buildings where I'm, where I live, and then we call it demolition by neglect. And we're, you want to prevent that, because they just, you know, if someone doesn't maintain it, it'll fall down on its own, and then you don't even have to worry about that. And then create new reuse and historic building design requirements to allow historic properties to be updated without requiring negative impacts to the historic facade. So that would be another code or building code amendment. Look into reducing or eliminating requirements for improvements that cannot be met on historic buildings due to the building's design and structure in order to make the building usable. And so again, that has to do with ceiling height clearances and accessibility, and, you know, how much above the footings and all that kind of stuff. And so when you try to use the code as it, as it face value, it really prohibits a lot of things. And so that would have to do also with an in-depth next step of code update, design update of the, you know, so it goes beyond the general plan, those are completely different things. And of course, once you touch all that, I can tell you right now, in Mesa, they've been working on it for... working on it for seven years. And the State Historic Preservation Office is at every single meeting with red lines and very high interest because they're very interested in saving these things. And so it's a very involved process, which is why we didn't want to, we wanted to touch on it here to make sure we, we mention it because it wasn't mentioned previously. So we want to have that way so that if we go after grants or bonds or any kind of financial aids, that it's mentioned that this is what we want to do, but we can't, you know, we need some more support because it's, because historic is, it's awesome, but it is, it's like usually one of those smaller departments, but it's very tedious in law and requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any further questions?
Good job, Jess.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Actually, I do have one...
Oh, never mind.
Oh, it's fine. You had great questions last time too, so.
Well, the updated land use map, if you don't mind bringing that up, there's, there's just one item that, knowing my neighbors out there, I could see it being a problem. If I'm reading, I'm colorblind in fact, so there's, there's the Clax Canyon area right there in Thunderbird Canyon. It's, it's that little gerrymandering hook that comes out up by Coyote Pass. If you look to the right of it, you'll see like there's a different shade of green-yellow.
And somebody point, I have no idea what you're talking about, sorry.
Yes. So right here. Yeah. Outside, outside.
Oh.
Is that, it's like property's out there, they're all, right now, basically rural.
So to, to answer your question...
That is rural.
That is, yeah.
That is rural, okay.
Right.
And that, that's my concern right there.
Yeah.
You're probably going to get a fight if you expand the city boundaries there based on my discussion with neighbors, based on water. I can tell you that right away. But if further, you're, you're trying to allow, you're going to encroach in that area and then you're going to allow denser development, I could see a problem. If it's staying rural, then it probably...
No, that is, that is the rural. Do I have it in here? Rural, one unit or less.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so with that, to kind of expand on that a little bit for that area too, we, we have to keep in mind and what, what is coming to that area, right? So, yeah, the interchange, that's, that's coming, you know, that's, that's another thing that's going to happen, right? And what, one, one of the things that we, we do in planning is based upon things like that. We, we try to have our higher density areas closer to that for, you know, like apartment complexes and commercial properties, those things. And as, as you get farther away from that is where you start getting the larger properties and less density, right? So that's, that's something to keep in mind, but, and we actually did talk about that in the GPAC, that was something that was absolutely brought up. And, and we opted to not do that at this point. One of the reasons is because that, the, the terrain in that area, right? It's building, if you, if you can find a spot to build a home, you're going to be doing good, let alone a higher density, something or other, right? So, I mean, it was, it was something that we absolutely did discuss, we discussed as a group, we discussed as separate groups, within the groups and everything else, and that, that's, that's why we opted to keep it that way.
All right. Well, just a heads up, because I live out, I have property out there and I know my neighbors. Since we're on the subject, and I hate to stretch this out, that the, the little area that is in the city limits, that's Beal Springs, I, I know there was, there was some discussion a while back, and it went up in the county a little bit, about trying to make the, the county rodeo, like peeling off the rodeo fairgrounds from the fairgrounds and then putting it where the dairy was, you know? And it was kind of under, under wraps because, you know, you don't want to drive up the price of the guy that's selling the lot. Awfully close to that is that Beal Springs area, you know? And I didn't see rodeos listed in the list of like different amenities, but since we're talking about Kingman having its own sort of a branding or whatever with clear blue skies and stuff, rodeos go right, right along with that. If you look at WikiUp, you can, you drive into town, you drive right past that little culvert, you know, the wash, and you see a rodeo and they play it up like crazy. And now that we get that interchange thing coming right through there, I mean, maybe we could change the language to at least make something like that feasible.
Or around the county though.
Yeah, I know it is. Like maybe it would be in the city's interest to have its own rodeo. Right down the road, right down the road at, at Prescott is the world's oldest rodeo. I mean, why don't we have our own that we're showcasing right on our highway? Again, I know this is getting beyond the scope, but like if anything in that document can make something like that easier to do in the future, it might benefit the city.
So we talk about partnerships a lot as well. And so that would be a big partnership with the county, which is, we talked, we did talk about that over, when we were doing the land use mapping and everything, about what the older space would be or they could move it or all kinds of stuff like that. And we just left it because, one, it's not for sale right now. And they, they've talked about moving in and then they don't move it. And so we're like, okay, well, let's just assume it's staying here. But, I mean, that would definitely be something that, that would be a partnership that we would have to work with them on. Everybody wanted, like you said, to do exactly what you were talking about, but to then determine on private property where a rodeo would go, which would then diminish, you know, it would be parked, usually parks in open space, which can go in any land use category, any park, any other stuff can go pretty much anywhere. But it was just a, we didn't want to diminish someone's, in theory, them think that they couldn't use it for something, you know? And so we just talk about, you know, the vision and then economic development would, that's something economic development would do a survey or, I don't work survey, but a, work probably a paper on or campaign on. City council would have to get more involved in coordinating with the county and getting them to move their feet on that. So with that one, kind of like some of the other ones we've had, we kind of just like, okay, well, this is a 10-year, it can be amended, you know, we'll see what happens with the interchanges, see what the growth happens with what we have here and the planned developments. And then maybe it, you know, we could amend, change that land use map or, you know, in a year or two or see what happens. But just to determine where something like that would go right now would be too premature, they felt.
We support the city building a rodeo that's visible from our numerous highways.
Say it on the record, that's all you need to do, to say it again and again until somebody listens at the county.
Good. Good luck on that.
I, I've done the same thing on my boards. I'm like, I'm just stating on the record that I like this and not that. No harm, so.
Let us know again when we get down to number four, you can make the announcement that you would like a rodeo.
Go to the public speaking at city council too, it's like...
So I think that's all I've got.
You sure?
I don't know, maybe.
There's always city council you can talk to, too. So you can speak out as you want.
All right, does anybody else have any more questions? No?
I'd like to make a motion to forward this to the city council.
Okay, hold on one second.
Oh.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open us up for commission discussion and you go right ahead if you feel like you want to make a motion.
I just did.
All right, do we have a second or do we have any more conversation?
I would, I would say we need to be more clear on what we're, what your recommendation is for the city council. It's already going to go to the city council, so what would be the recommendation if you could include that in your motion?
I make, make a recommendation that we accept the hard work that's been done on this 2040 agenda and like to forward it to the city council.
Okay, so we have a recommendation for approval to the city council. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.